The invocation and pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilmember Thacker.
Members of council, we arrive as individuals with unique ideas and experiences, but all with a desire to fill the needs of others. I ask that you use reason, wisdom, and empathy in your decisions today to take into account the implications your decisions will have now and in the future. We should all plant an acorn, even though we may not live to hear the wind rush through its leaves or the joyous laughter of children playing in the comfort of its shade. We plant the seed for the benefit of future generations.
Thank you. Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Thacker.
Here.
Here.
Hayes.
Here.
Horniman.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Reesner.
Here.
Snay.
Here.
Thank you. Let the record show all seven members of council are present this evening. Minutes from September 2nd, 2025, regular and committee of the whole were distributed. Any questions, deletions, corrections on those? All right, those will stand approved as presented. We are now under committee reports. Finance Committee, Councilmember Reesner.
No report, Madam President.
All right, thank you. Law and Community Planning, Councilmember Dockerty.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. A law and community planning committee meeting was held Monday, September 8th, 2025 in council chambers. The purpose of this meeting was to discuss mayor's request for legislation 25-41, which was the escrow agreement, and also 25-44, which was the deed acceptance for 17 North Washington Street and any other business that may come before them. Attending were councilmembers Kyle Dockerty, Cheyenne Thacker, John Hayes, Aaron Jones, Scott Horniman, and Dennis Snay. Also in attendance were city administrator Nick Dutrow, Mayor Wilkinson, city law director Zach Fowler, city engineer Matt Watson, and executive director at destination Seneca County Bryce Riggs. Councilman Dockerty called the meeting to order at 5:16 PM. First, Mr. Dutrow started the meeting by explaining the escrow agreement. Dutrow stated the city is in the process of placing new boundary lines, parcels, for the West End development, which is the field next to the Willows. Dutrow stated that the field is owned by one family, and they are in the process of selling off another piece of that property. The county engineer had required upon the next sale of that property, instead of just chunking off another piece of the property, they needed to redraw the lines of the property. Part of that is going to be a dedication of a road that will connect Progress Parkway. Mr. Riggs also spoke of the economic impact the site potentially have in the future and what that may look like upon completion. Councilman Dockerty made a motion for the law director to draft legislation for mayor's request 25-41 and declare an emergency. Councilman Hayes seconded that motion. The motion carried three to zero. Next, we discussed mayor's request for legislation 25-44 regarding the deed acceptance at 17 North Washington Street. Mr. Dutrow began by explaining that the parking lot next to Ralph's Joy of Living and the 9/11 memorial site at one time were Rainbow Muffler and Firestone Tire. Nick stated that when Cydeck acquired these properties, they were in very poor condition. Nick stated there was an agreement between the city and Cydeck at the time that Cydeck would purchase these properties with the intentions of demolishing what remained on those sites. Cydeck's intentions were to give those properties back to the city of Tiffin when those sites were deemed to have no environmental issues. Nick also stated Cydeck has been working on this the last few years on getting a clean bill of health on the parking lot next to Ralph's, that the city has an agreement to take over those properties when there are no longer any environmental issues. Nick said we don't have to take ownership of both properties immediately. Next day, the city was looking to take those properties off Cydeck's books. Councilman Dockerty made a motion for the law director to draft legislation for mayor's request 25-44. Snay seconded the motion. Motion carried three to zero. With no further business, Councilman Dockerty adjourned the meeting at 5:33 PM.
All right, thank you. Any questions on that report? All right, materials and equipment, Councilmember Jones.
No report, Madam President.
Personnel and Labor Relations, Councilmember Hayes.
Thank you, Madam President. A meeting was held in city chambers on September 8th, 2025. The purpose of this meeting was to discuss mayor's request for legislation 25-46, an appointment to the Civil Service Commission, 25-47, a reappointment to the Seneca Metropolitan Housing Authority, and 25-48, an appointment to the Seneca County Board of Health. Attending were committee members John Hayes and Cheyenne Thacker. Also attending were Mayor Lee Wilkinson, law director Zachary Fowler, city administrator Nick Dutrow, councilmembers Scott Horniman, Aaron Jones, and Dennis Snay, and parks director Bryce Kuhn. Councilman Hayes called the meeting to order at 5:33 PM. Mayor Wilkinson highlighted the qualifications of the appointee to the Civil Service Commission, Barry Devine. City administrator Dutrow also noted recent time spent between the appointee and the outgoing member of the commission. Thacker motioned to have the law director prepare legislation to accept the mayor's appointment, and Hayes seconded it. The motion carried on a vote of two to zero. Next, the mayor informed the committee of the Seneca Metropolitan Housing Authority appointee Tom Schweitzer's interest in remaining on the board. The mayor also mentioned a letter from a member of the Metropolitan Housing Authority of Mansfield recommending Schweitzer remain. Hayes motioned to have the law director prepare legislation accepting the mayor's appointment, and Thacker seconded the motion carried on a vote of two to zero. And finally, the mayor discussed qualifications of the Seneca County Board of Health appointee Helena Thycos, as well as details around the opening on the board. Hayes motioned to have the law director prepare legislation to accept the mayor's appointment. Thacker seconded the motion carried on a vote of two to zero. And with no other business, the meeting adjourned at 5:41 PM. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions on that committee report? All right, Recreation and Public Property, Councilmember Snay.
Yes, Madam President. A Recreation and Public Property Committee meeting was held Monday, September 8th, 2025 in council chambers. The purpose was to discuss mayor's request for legislation 25-42, alcohol sale exemptions for events, and 25-43, renaming Applejack Park to Louisa K. Fast Park, as well as any other business that may come before the committee. Attending was committee chair Dennis Snay, committee members Aaron Jones and Scott Horniman. Also attending were Mayor Wilkinson, city administrator Dutrow, law director Fowler, and parks director Bryce Kuhn. Finally, councilmembers Thacker and Hayes were in attendance. Snay called the meeting to order at 5:43. Mayor Wilkinson spoke on how the original ordinance was for Hedges Boyer Park. Dutrow said this legislation is asking that we name city ordinance 935.04 to include Oakley Park because of Winterfest and Rotary Club of Centennial Park in alcohol sales. This would include a fenced area, all self-contained. Each event would need to be sanctioned by the city, plus the Ohio Department of Commerce. Horniman asked Mr. Kuhn about who was responsible for cleanup, and he mentioned there is a list on how the area is to be left. Councilmember Thacker asked Mr. Kuhn more about the cleanup procedure. Law director Fowler reminded me that this legislation will need an emergency because of the event being held in November. I made a motion. Horniman seconded the motion. Motion carried three to zero. Next, committee reviewed mayor's request for legislation 25-43, renaming Applejack Park to Louisa K. Fast Park. Mr. Dutrow mentioned that the current Louisa K. Fast Park was not yet, has not yet been sold. She lived across the street from the present-day Applejack Park. Horniman mentioned a couple of names for that park and provided history. Fowler added that we need to replace the current Fast Park with a different name. Dutrow suggested to call it Tiffin East Park. Councilmember jokingly said, "Call it for sale." So, that was a good one. Mr. Kuhn showed respect to Miss Fast and being fitting to rename Applejack Park to Louisa K. Fast Park. Also to reach out to a historical society, include a brass plaque. I made a motion for the law director to draft legislation that now Louisa K. Park be, to be renamed Tiffin East Park and for Applejack Park to be renamed Louisa K. Fast Park. Horniman seconded the motion. Motion carried three to zero. Meeting concluded at 6:01 PM.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on that committee report? All right, thank you. Streetside walks and sewers, Councilmember Thacker.
No report, Madam President.
And Economic Development and Downtown Planning, Councilmember Horniman.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. For the Committee of the Whole, does anyone see the need to schedule a Committee of the Whole meeting? All right, we are under reports of the officers. His honor, Mayor Lee Wilkinson.
Thank you, Madam President. As a reminder, this coming weekend is Heritage Festival Weekend. It all kicks off Friday morning at Hedges Boyer Park down where the, they have the school days in the lower part of the park. So, that starts at 9:00 AM, but there will be stuff available all weekend. So hopefully, I'll see everyone in town somewhere on one of those events locations sometime this weekend. Also, coming up the weekend after that, September 26th and 27th, there's lots of activities happening at the East Green. Please consult the community calendar, which you can get to at tiffenevents.com. So, that will be good. So check that out. And just in case you didn't write it down last time, I announced the Halloween will be, this is for the citywide trick-or-treat, Sunday, October 26th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And I would like to now introduce Judy DeZay, who will give us a little bit of information about the results of our community needs assessment meetings that we had this last July.
Yes, thank you so much. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam President, and members of council. Thank you for joining with residents in the Community Development Block Grants Needs Assessment Meetings this past July. Your participation helped demonstrate the city's commitment to listening to community voices as we plan for our 2026 CDBG application. As you know, four public ward meetings were held, and residents also shared input in an online portal. In total, more than 120 individuals contributed their perspectives. The report before you, it's the one on top that looks like this, summarizes the results of those meetings. It highlights the priorities that surfaced most frequently across all the outreach methods, including streets and sidewalks, parks and recreation, housing and homelessness, youth services and childcare, and public safety and infrastructure. The report also includes each individual idea that was presented along with those eligibility considerations for each of those ideas. A digital version of the report is available to you in the public at tiffencdbg.com. Alongside these community identified priorities, the city is also offering the CDBG subrecipient application for qualified nonprofit organizations that serve the city of Tiffin. Big shout out to the law director for helping me improve this drastically. So, this process allows for nonprofits to request funding for public services or public facility improvements. And I do want to highlight two really important key points. One, the subrecipient application will be considered alongside the other project ideas from the needs assessment report. Only one project will ultimately be chosen for the 2026 application. And secondly, nonprofits that submit an application and attend a workshop that does not guarantee funding. The city is not obligated to select a subrecipient, and all proposals will be evaluated against federal eligibility requirements and local priorities. So, in order to be eligible, all nonprofit applicants must attend one of three mandatory workshops in October. These being Monday, October 20th, 8:00 to 9:00 AM, Wednesday, October 22nd, 6:00 to 7:00 PM, or Friday, October 24th, 12:00 to 1:00. All of these workshops being held at our offices, the Seneca County Collaborative, at 96 South Washington Street. And these workshops are just so that way nonprofits understand how to fill out this application and what all requirements come with federal funding and with CEBG grants in particular. So, all applications, as you can see on the front, are due by February 27th, 2026. And more information, including this application and workshop registration can be found at tiffencdbg.com. Final project selection is going to take place in spring of 2026, and that project will move forward into the city's formal CDBG application, which should open, should open, it's the state, in June 2026. So, thank you again for your engagement in this process. Together, we are ensuring that Tiffin CDBG resources are directed toward the project that will have the greatest benefit for our community. So, do you have any questions for me?
I have one question from the background. Do you see any benefit to any of us attending these subrecipient workshops as well? Or is it really just so that they fill out the forms correctly?
It's mostly so they fill out the forms correctly. If you do have time and you wanted to pop in, if you attended the needs assessment meetings, you already have a lot of knowledge about CDBG. But this is really for the nonprofits to learn what CDBG is and then what extra requirements they're going to have if they are an actual recipient. Because they'll have to report both to the collaborative and to the city on those projects.
Thank you.
Yeah, Councilmember Horniman.
I was just going to say the process, like, I really enjoyed, like, the back and forth and, you know, the kind of gathering and like, you know, it's, anytime that, like, you're seeking feedback from the public and they respond, it's a very good thing, because that's how we operate, is, you know, with getting feedback from the people that we represent. I really appreciate you, you know, doing it all and making sure. And it was a real nice process. I enjoyed it.
Thank you. Yes, I will also point out, I highly encourage you to look through the entire report. There's a table towards the beginning that have the top ideas that were mentioned two times or more between the portal and the meetings. But then, at the very back in the appendix, Appendix A, lists every single idea that was submitted either in person or in the portal. So, with CDBG eligibility requirements. But they could also be potential projects for other sources of funding or that you as council members might be interested in.
No, I just want to say thank you to Judy. I know you gave me credit, but I just gave you examples. Judy did all the hard work, and this is very well put together. So, thank you for that. And just to kind of reiterate what she's trying to say is essentially, we don't know that subrecipient is going to be the route that council decides to go, but it's appropriate to educate the community now, gather interest so that when you make a decision in the spring on what you want to apply for, for the CDBG, what's your project, your program is going to be, you've got all the information, so you can make a decision. So, yeah, thank you for all your hard work.
Of course. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Appreciate that. And that concludes my report.
All right, Clerk of Council Anne Forrest.
No report, Madam President.
Director of Finance Kathy Kaufman.
Thank you, Madam President. I have several things for you tonight, so just bear with me. As we talked about in Committee of the Whole, I wanted to go over the legislation a second time. I had a lot of written communications this time, many requests for budget adjustments. So, for the public's knowledge, I would just like to go through some of those things. Zach was able to put them into two separate ordinances. The first one, 25-79, is all of the budget adjustments. And then 25-80 is a budget adjustment, but also a fund transfer between funds. So, that's why they're separated out. So, everything that's in ordinance 2579, we had a $30,000 donation from Webster Company to the Park and Recreation, and that is going towards the pump track that they want to put at the park. We needed to appropriate an extra $5,000 into the council clerk budget to pay for updates to the codified ordinances. We did not have enough in the current budget to do that, so we needed to put some more money there. The fire department had some unforeseen repairs needed to several of their vehicles. They had a budget for routine maintenance and things like that, but these were things that were unforeseen and were big repairs. So, they needed to add $20,000 to their vehicle maintenance budget. There was a donation from Tiffin Soccer Club to the Park and Recreation Department, and that is to pay for a fence at Highland Park, and that was for $29,593. We needed to appropriate $10,000 for sewer revenue, and that was for postage. We've had some increases from our vendor that takes care of our mailing, our sewer payments and sewer bills. And we also needed a little bit more to fund the postage meter for all the correspondence that we need to send out of the sewer revenue department. So, we needed to appropriate an extra $10,000 there. And in the finance department budget, we needed to appropriate funds in both the general fund area and the sewer area for a payout of accumulated time in that department. We received a $2,500 donation from Tiffin Eagles for the fire department. They're putting that towards operational supplies. And then there was a correction from what I had originally submitted. We had received a water bill for the pool. There were two of them. And we did not have enough in that budget to pay for those. So, we put $5,000, and we need it to be in the pool area. I think originally I had put Park and Recreation, but that should be in the pool department. It should go into 520 instead of 510. And that was 5,000. And then there was a municipal court fund. And this is kind of like the fire claims escrow fund, where this is an accounting process. It's not actual funds that we're putting in from general fund or anyplace else. So, this 790 fiduciary fund, this is to show every month, the municipal court will send us the dispersments for their criminal and civil cases. We have to show those on our books to properly account for it, for the budget. So, in recent years, I think five years in a row, they were lower than the amount that I had budgeted for. So, this year, I decided to lower that, and now they're back up to where they were. So, we need to put some more in there so that I can continue to show those dispersments properly. And then the last one was ordinance 2580. And that was, we had one of our sewer projects in Fund 563, Early Action 24 and 30 Project. We had finished that project completely. There were leftover funds where we had originally transferred several times from the sewer fund for anything that we might need additional to the grants and loans that we had for that. And so, that was actually leftover sitting in that fund. So, now what we are doing is appropriating those funds into that 563, so then we can actually transfer those funds back to the sewer fund where they came from. Any questions about any of those? Okay.
Councilmember Horniman.
The payment of, like, accumulated time and stuff like that, like, is that?
Yes, that is.
I knew you were going to say you were going to get into it or something like that.
Yes. That is for me.
Okay.
And I'll talk to you about it a little bit later here. I have your financial report for August. Total receipts for the month were $4,793,464.20. Expenses for the month were $3,559,566.18. The general fund unencumbered balance is $6,328,436.36. Income tax receipts for August 2025 were $944,618.60. Total annual increase in income tax collections for August 2025 compared to August 2024 was $74,681.46. Year-to-date, income tax receipts are up 4.56%. The 0.25% portion of income tax receipts that was transferred into Fund 215 for Public Streets for August 2025 was $115,551.37. The portion of income tax receipts that was transferred into Fund 331 for capital improvements for August 2025 is $81,106.18. In August, the city received the second half of the real estate tax revenue check from the county. The amount deposited into general fund was $453,268.32. On Monday, September 8th, sewer revenue certified invoices more than 90 days past due to the county auditor. The last day for customers to pay on those invoices was August 29th, 2025. In addition, we also certified sidewalk and mowing assessments to the county on September 8th. The unexpected balance for all funds is $44,438,427.50, which is the same as the bank balances for the same time period. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Reesner.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to accept the finance director's report and bank reconciliation for month ending August 2025.
Thank you. There's a motion to accept the finance director's report and bank reconciliation for the month of August. Sir's second, Councilmember Horniman.
I'll second that motion, Madam President.
Thank you. There's a motion, the second. Any discussion? Favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
One more thing.
Sure.
I don't have anything prepared for this, and I don't even know how to do this, but I'm just going to speak from the heart. I want to take this opportunity to let you all know that I have applied for retirement. This was a difficult decision for me. I've been struggling over the past six months, especially to try to balance my work life and my personal life. There are quite a few things that I've had to push back in my personal life. I haven't been able to get to them. And I've just gotten to the point where I feel like I need to adjust my focus, switch my focus to those things in my personal life. And it's hard when you realize you're needed in two places, and you can't be in two places and still give 100% to both. So, I just want to say that it has been such an honor to serve this community. It's been an honor to work with all of you. And I know that you guys are going to go forward and keep leading the city in wonderful ways. And I wish I could continue to be a part of it, but I know I've made the right decision for myself. But, like I said, it was, it was very difficult. But thank you for allowing me to serve with you.
You're going to make me cry, Kathy. No, well, I think you certainly respect and understand your position. And totally understand how hard and challenging that would be for you. It would certainly be missed. You were an incredible asset to the city and council. And we loved, I loved, I think I speak on behalf of everyone, loved working with you. So, yeah, well, congrats on your retirement, but yeah, certainly miss you.
Thank you so much.
Of course. Anything else, or does anyone else have anything?
Well, I just want to express appreciation for, how many years of, have you dedicated to the city of Tiffin?
When I walked through the door, it was a college intern, so it's been about 35 years.
35 years.
Good for you. That's awesome.
Thank you very much.
Much deserved.
And besides my foot traffic between my office and Nick's office, Kathy's office is the next most visited office in the entire building, asking for help and understanding, and you've been very gracious to help me along the way. So, thank you.
I've enjoyed working with all of you.
All right. That takes us to Director of Finance Zach Fowler.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I'm not sure how I follow that up.
Good luck.
No promises. I just wanted to touch on a few things. So, just some of this also for public benefit. That Resolution 2539 on the escrow agreement, again, this is something that is required for the plating process. Typically, a land developer, when they subdivide, they have to make any of the required public improvements, so streets, sidewalks, et cetera. For this property in particular, the city has instead agreed to take on the role of constructing those public improvements, and so through an escrow agreement is how we're getting that done. The landowners have all signed, so this is essentially council's blessing so the mayor can sign, so at the planning commission meeting tomorrow, the planning commission can approve a final plat. So that's why we need your suspension tonight, and that's why there's an emergency. We touched on the opioid settlements earlier, but again, these are two settlements that have been worked out. And so essentially, since the Ohio Attorney General has signed off on the settlement, each of the political subdivisions are being asked to do that, and that's what these are for. Ordinance 2569, that's the mobile food ordinance. Just a reminder, that's on its final reading. The amendment was to change the effective date from April 1 of 2026 to January 1, but as otherwise is the same as it's been introduced. Ordinance 2576, I've mentioned before that we have updated the codified ordinances, so that'll be current through August 4 for local, for state level. It'll be current through the end of last year. Typically, that gets three readings. There is a requirement in the ordinance that it has, there has to be publication of a notice at least one time before you vote on it. So Anne will take care of that, but typically you let it go three and then vote. Ordinance 2581, that's me correcting an error. I'll definitely take the blame for it, but there's a plus sign that should have been a minus sign, and that's just the change on that. And then finally, with Kathy's announcement, I just wanted to kind of go over the process. The Director of Finance prior to 2000 was an elected physician, but the charter changed in 2000, became appointed. So the mayor appoints the Director of Finance. You, as counsel, then a majority of you need to approve that appointment. In the interim, when Kathy is not here, she is to appoint an acting director of finance. She's been advised on what that looks like. I think there is somebody internally that she'll appoint to cover that time until the mayor is able to appoint someone. As far as qualifications for finance director, council sets that. You've done that in the codified ordinances, 135.12. It's a very flexible standard, so that allows the mayor a lot of flexibility in trying to find the right person. So there's no residency requirement. There's, you don't have to be a registered voter of the city or of the county, but that just offers a lot of flexibility. But more or less, looking for someone who has that kind of accounting, finance, and tax background. So those, that's what will be forthcoming, essentially, is eventually you'll get, the city will look for and then find someone. You'll get an appointment, and we'll do an approval, just like we do with the other positions. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for the law director, Councilmember Snay?
Yes, Madam President. Law Director Fowler. So, when he, the mayor appointed, but the city council, do we meet as a whole, committee as a whole? Do we elect a prospective candidates? Or how do we handle that?
That's a great question. And I don't think you were on council when Kathy was appointed, but I mean, some of it is probably your prerogative. I would say it's more than likely what'll happen is the mayor will give you a request saying, hey, I've appointed so-and-so as the next director of finance. It'll go to probably the Labor and Personnel Committee. It'll be discussed there and then come to council at the next meeting with the resolution to vote on it. So that's more than likely what the process will be.
All right.
Any other questions for the law director? Councilmember Thacker.
I would just like to bring up that I'd like to have the law director draft some sort of legislation honoring Kathy's work with the city and her time with us. So I don't know if now is the appropriate time for that, or... Okay, fantastic.
Anything else for the law director? Okay. That takes us to written communications.
Finance Director's Request for Legislation Number F25-31 to amend the 2025 Budget Ordinance 24-94 to appropriate funds into the Parks and Recreation Capital Budget. Finance Director's Request for Legislation Number F23-32 to amend the 2025 Budget Ordinance 24-94 to appropriate funds into the Clerk of Counsel Budget. Finance Director's Request for Legislation Number 25-33 to amend the 2025 Budget Ordinance 24-94 to appropriate funds into the Fire Department Budget. Finance Director's Request for Legislation Number 25-34 to amend the 2025 Budget Ordinance 24-94 to appropriate funds into Fund 563, Early Action 24 and 30 Project, and approve the transfer of those funds back to the 552 Sewer Fund. Finance Director's Request for Legislation Number 25-35 to amend the 2025 Budget Ordinance 24-94 to appropriate funds in the Park and Recreation Budget. Finance Director's Request for Legislation Number 25-36 to amend the 2025 Budget Ordinance 24-94 to appropriate funds into the Sewer Revenue Department Budget. Finance Director's Request for Legislation Number 25-37 to amend the 2025 Budget Ordinance 24-94 to appropriate funds into the Finance Department Budget. Finance Director's Request for Legislation Number 25-38 to amend the 2025 Budget Ordinance 24-94 to appropriate funds into the Fire Department Budget. Finance Director's Request for Legislation Number 25-39 to amend the 2025 Budget Ordinance 24-94 to appropriate funds into the Pool Budget. And Finance Director's Request for Legislation Number 25-40 to amend the 2025 Budget Ordinance 24-94 to appropriate funds into the Municipal Court Fund.
Thank you. Finance Director's Requests for Legislation Number F25-31 through 25-33 and 25-35 through 25-40 are prepared tonight under ordinance 25-79. And Finance Director's Requests for Legislation Number F25-34 is prepared as ordinance 25-80. All right. So that takes us to oral communications. Anyone wishing to address council may step to the podium, sign in, and direct their questions to myself. All right. If no takers. Okay. All right.
Sign it like after my question?
Sure, that's fine.
Okay, Madam President. I just heard tonight that, for the first time, that Applejack Park was getting renamed. I just didn't know about it, and I was curious the reason for the renaming.
Sure. Councilmember Snay, do you want to go through that?
Yes. It's gonna be renamed as Louisa K.
Fast.
Fast Park. And it's gonna be, and the reasoning is, the park that's named for her right now is being sold by the federal government. And then she had a house, or has had a house right across the street from that park. Applejack Park is just a, is a name, what, from Jack, because it's Jackson Street and Apple Street. That's kind of like a loose name, but to pay honor to Miss Fast, we are honoring her, and she did a lot. See, there's a lot of history with her and the city, not just city, but the state and national.
It's important that her name still be on the park.
Yeah, to be put on the park, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. There'll be, there'll be like a brass plaque, and it'll definitely look nice.
Thank you. That's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sir, just if you don't mind, just for our record of our minutes, could you just state your name?
Craig Janae.
Thank you, Craig.
Is there anyone else wishing to address council this evening? All right. That takes us to motions. Are there any motions this evening? Right. That brings us to resolutions and ordinances.
Resolution Number 2025-39, introduced by Kyle Dougherty. Resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into and sign an escrow agreement with the Kin Frontier LLC, Stacy K. Grineer, and the estate of Stephen Martin Kin for the construction of Progress Parkway and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. This is the first reading of Resolution 25-39. Councilmember Dougherty.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for immediate passage of Resolution 25-39 in suspending city council's three reading rule.
Thank you. There's a motion for suspension of council's three reading rule and immediate passage of Resolution 25-39. Is there a second? Councilmember Snay?
Yes, Madam President. I'd like to second that motion.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Councilmember Dougherty.
Thank you. The reason for waiving the three reading rule is that the landowners require approval of the final plat at the earliest time possible.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right. We will first vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Thacker.
Yes.
Dougherty.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Horniman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
And Snay.
Yes.
Thank you. The suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero. We'll now vote on the emergency.
Councilmember Thacker.
Yes.
Dougherty.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Horniman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
And Snay.
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of seven to zero. We'll now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Thacker.
Yes.
Dougherty.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Horniman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
And Snay.
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 25-39 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Resolution Number 2025-40, introduced by Dennis Snay. A resolution renaming Applejack Park to Louisa K. Fast Park, renaming the existing Louisa K. Fast Park on State Route 101 to Tiffin East Park and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. This is the first reading of Resolution 25-40.
Resolution Number 2025-41, introduced by John Hayes. A resolution approving mayor's appointment of Barry Devine to serve an unexpired term on the Civil Service Commission from the effective date of this resolution until December 31, 2027.
This is the first reading of Resolution 25-41. Councilmember Hayes.
Yes, I'd like the motion for passage of Resolution 2025-41.
Thank you. There's a motion for passage of Resolution 25-41. Is there a second? Councilmember Thacker.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. There's a motion in a second. Any discussion? Okay. We will vote on the passage.
Councilmember Thacker.
Yes.
Dougherty.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Horniman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
And Snay.
Yes.
Resolution 25-41 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Resolution Number 2025-42, introduced by John Hayes. A resolution approving mayor's reappointment of Tom Schweitzer to serve a five-year term on the Seneca Metropolitan Housing Authority from the effective date of this resolution until December 31, 2030.
Thank you. This is the first reading of Resolution 25-42. Councilmember Hayes.
Yes, I'd like the motion for passage of Resolution 2025-42.
Thank you. There's a motion for passage of Resolution 25-42. Is there a second? Councilmember Reesner.
I'll second the motion, Madam President.
Thank you. There's a motion in a second. Any discussion? Right. We will vote on the passage.
Councilmember Thacker.
Yes.
Dougherty.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Horniman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
And Snay.
Yes.
Resolution 25-42 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Resolution Number 2025-43, introduced by John Hayes. A resolution approving mayor's appointment of Helena Thikos, thank you, to serve an unexpired term on the Seneca County Board of Health from the effective date of this resolution until December 31, 2027.
This is the first reading of Resolution 25-43. Councilmember Hayes.
Yes, I'd like the motion for passage of Resolution 2025-43.
Thank you. There's a motion for passage of Resolution 25-43. Is there a second? Councilmember Reesner.
I'll second the motion, Madam President.
There's a motion in a second. Any discussion? Right. We will vote on the passage.
Councilmember Thacker.
Yes.
Dougherty.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Horniman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
And Snay.
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 25-43 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Resolution Number 2025-44, introduced by Kyle Dougherty. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute and submit an application to participate in the Purdue Pharma LP and Sackler family settlement concerning alleged misconduct related to opioids and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. This is the first reading of Resolution 25-44. Councilmember Dougherty.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for immediate passage of Resolution Number 25-44 and suspending city council's three reading rule.
Thank you. There's a motion for suspension of council's three reading rule and immediate passage of Resolution 25-44. Is there a second? Councilmember Thacker.
I'll second that motion.
There's a motion in a second. Any discussion? Councilmember Dougherty.
Yes, thank you. The reason for waiving the three reading rule is that the deadline to file to participate is September 30 of 2025.
Thank you. All right. We will first vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Thacker.
Yes.
Dougherty.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Horniman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
And Snay.
Yes.
Thank you. Suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero. We'll now vote on the emergency.
Councilmember Thacker.
Yes.
Dougherty.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Horniman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
And Snay.
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of seven to zero. We'll now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Thacker.
Yes.
Dougherty.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Horniman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
And Snay.
Yes.
Resolution 25-44 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Resolution Number 2025-45, introduced by Kyle Dougherty. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute and submit an application to participate in the proposed opioid litigation settlement involving pharmaceutical manufacturers Alvegan, Amneal, Apotex, Hikma, Inditier, Mylan, Sun, and Zitis, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. This is the first reading of Resolution 25-45. Councilmember Dougherty.
Yes, thank you. I move for immediate passage of Resolution Number 25-45 and suspending city council's three reading rule.
Thank you. There's a motion for suspension of council's three reading rule and immediate passage of Resolution 25-45. Councilmember Snay.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I second that motion.
Thank you. There's a motion in a second. Any discussion? Councilmember Dougherty.
Thank you. The reason for waiving the city's three reading rule on this is that there's a deadline to file to participate is October 8 of 2025.
Thank you. All right. We will first vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Thacker.
Yes.
Dougherty.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Horniman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
And Snay.
Yes.
Thank you. Suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero. We'll now vote on the emergency.
Councilmember Thacker.
Yes.
Dougherty.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Horniman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
And Snay.
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of seven to zero. We'll now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Thacker.
Yes.
Dougherty.
Yes.
Hayes.
Yes.
Horniman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
And Snay.
Yes.
Resolution 25-45 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Amended Ordinance Number 2025-69, introduced by Scott Horniman. An ordinance to amend Chapter 723.
through and such and everything. It came out of my committee, I'm just, I just don't, I think we can do better. The whole thing started where we were trying to get the Fire Chief's recommendations on here. The Fire Chief has concerns about what's in here and possible things that should be addressed. The police chief does, the city engineer does. You know, what's in here is you have the $100 flat fee for getting your mobile food truck vendor license and such. It removes that $25 weekly fee. On top of the $100 fee, they'll still, if they enroll in the I-roll, which puts them with different cities, that's an additional $39. Also on here is the 100-foot variance rule from similar restaurant or cuisine business. In my personal opinion, I think it should be larger than that. I was talking with a local restaurateur the other day, and we measured out 100 feet, and, you know, he, he seemed to think it should be 200 or 300 feet. In this also is the 24 hours of there, that our food truck is on the street and it's not operating, is what's in here. My personal opinion, I'd like to see eight to 12 hours instead of having food trucks sitting on the street all the time and such and everything. The one thing that it also does is it changes the effective date to January 1, 2026, and everything. We, I wasn't going to move for passage, I was honestly, I was going to possibly, this is the exact same bill they got, or ordinance that got voted down last time that we voted on it, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Thacker?
I would agree with Scott that this isn't maybe my ideal, but it felt like, to me, that this was some semblance of us coming to an agreement on a middle ground. And so I think for what we have right now, with the people that we have right now, and with the information that we have right now, this is probably the best version of this that's going to come out of this council. I would further recommend that, after we get through this coming year, that we reevaluate this next fall and see if what we've passed and how it's been followed, and if there are any issues, maybe reevaluate at that time. But for tonight, I think this is our, this is our best bet.
Thank you. Councilmember Horniman?
Just to clarify a few things and such, like we talked about it in committee, and one of the amendments that I offered was them having the food truck vendors, especially from out of town, file with the city income tax department. That motion did not get a second, but under further review under the city ordinance, if a, if a business or a 1099 or a contractor works 22 days out of a month in the city, they're required to file with the city income tax department and such. So that is, that makes me feel a little better, but it doesn't, I would like to, we operate on income tax, and that is the biggest thing. And summation is, with this, with the food trucks, I mean, I've talked with all the food truck owners, or at least most of them, you know, been engaged with them online, I've talked with the restaurant owners and stuff. I really thought that having no food trucks on Washington Street, you know, was probably a good amendment. That didn't get seconded or anything like that, but that when you read through the police chief and the fire chief's concerns about safety and visibility and sightlines and marketing for the downtown businesses and such and blocking things, or that, you know, trying to get equipment and people into an emergency with a thing that has a propane tank, you know, I kind of lean towards the professionals on that one, so.
Thank you. Any other discussion before we take a vote here? All right, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please, on the vote.
Councilmember Thacker?
Yes.
Dougherty?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Horniman?
No.
Jones?
Yes.
Reisner?
Yes.
Snay?
Yes.
Thank you. The amended ordinance 25-69 passes with a vote of six in favor and one opposed.
Ordinance Number 2025-76, introduced by Scott Horniman. An ordinance to revise the codified ordinances by adopting replacement pages thereto and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. This is the first reading of Ordinance 25-76.
Ordinance Number 2025-77, introduced by Dennis Snay. An ordinance amending Section 935.04 of the codified ordinances to allow sale, possession, or consumption of alcohol at Oakley Park and Rotary Club of Tiffin Centennial Park, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. This is the first reading of Ordinance 25-77.
Ordinance Number 2025-78, introduced by Kyle Dougherty. An ordinance authorizing the acquisition of real property located at 17 North Washington Street in the city of Tiffin, Ohio.
Thank you. This is the first reading of Ordinance 25-78.
Ordinance Number 2025-79, introduced by Kevin Reisner. An ordinance amending the 2025 Budget Ordinance 24-94 to appropriate various funds into the annual budget.
Thank you. This is the first reading of Ordinance 25-79. Councilmember Reisner?
Thank you, Madam President. I move for immediate passage of Ordinance 2025-79, suspending City Council's three reading rule.
Thank you. There's a motion for suspension of council's three reading rule and immediate passage of Ordinance 25-79. Is there a second? Councilmember Dougherty?
I second that motion, Madam President.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Councilmember Reisner?
This is related to those budget adjustments mentioned by the Finance Director and even the council clerk in the written communications. Do you want to thank the Tiffin Eagles, the Tiffin Soccer Club, and Webster for the donations included in this?
Agreed, thank you. All right, we will first vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Thacker?
Yes.
Dougherty?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Horniman?
No.
Jones?
Yes.
Reisner?
Yes.
And Snay?
Yes.
Suspension passes with a vote of six in favor and one opposed. We'll now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Thacker?
Yes.
Dougherty?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Horniman?
No.
Jones?
Yes.
Reisner?
Yes.
And Snay?
Yes.
Thank you. Suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero. We'll now vote on the emergency.
Councilmember Thacker?
Yes.
Dougherty?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Horniman?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Reisner?
Yes.
And Snay?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 25-80 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Resolution Number 2025-81, introduced by Kevin Reisner. An ordinance amending Section 1 of Ordinance Number 2025-64 to correct a reduction in the Capital Improvement Fund, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. This is the first reading of Ordinance 25-81. Councilmember Reisner?
Thank you, Madam President. I move for immediate passage of Ordinance 2025-81, suspending City Council's reading rule.
Thank you. There's a motion to suspend council's three reading rule and immediate passage of Ordinance 25-81. Is there a second? Councilmember Snay?
Yes, Madam President. I second that motion.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Councilmember Reisner?
This is just a simple correction to assure that we're all set on our audits.
Thank you. All right, we will first vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Thacker?